Everyone, it's good to see you bright and early here on a Thursday morning at 8:30. We get to see who the true morning people are now with people working from home. So it looks like a lot of people are coming on the call. But welcome to the Boynton Beach Government Affairs Council meeting this morning on Thursday, April 23rd. We've got a special guest in Commissioner Bernard this morning. We appreciate him spending some time with us as well. What I'm going to do first and foremost is just to turn this over to Jonathan Porches. He's going to give you just some ground rules about the call for the next hour, how to ask questions, et cetera. So Jonathan?
Thank you. Good morning, everyone. Thanks for joining us. Just so you know, the call will be recorded and we will be sending you a link to view it later in our YouTube playbook. And so any questions you have, please use the chat box below. We asked that during the presentation, you refrain from using the chat box to chat and only put your questions in there as we have a large group of attendees this morning and we want to be able to sort through the questions efficiently. Commissioner Bernard will answer the questions at the end of the presentation and I will read them at that time. So enjoy the presentation.
Thank you, Jonathan. And you can chat privately on the private component, but the chat to everyone, just if you could keep those to questions, that'll help us organize them near the end. We're so proud to have Sophia Eccleston, who's an externals affair manager for FPL on the Chamber's Board of Directors in our leadership group, extremely supportive of our chamber and all the ones she's involved in. FPL is sponsoring this event for us this morning. And so I want to turn it over to Sophia to talk about all the really cool things that FPL is doing during these challenging times. Sophia?
Thanks, Troy. Good morning, everyone. Just kind of wanted to touch in a little bit about what FPL is doing in the community right now to help our customers during this COVID pandemic. Besides donating over $4 million to various organizations within the community to help, you know, organizations that are struggling with food insecurity, homelessness, et cetera, we're also looking at ways that we can help other customers. So coming in May, we're looking to lower everyone's bill by 25%. We have this going before the Public Service Commission next week. So we're expecting a decision from them. Once that gets passed, everyone will see a 25% reduction on their utility bills. Some of the things we've also implemented during this COVID pandemic is suspending electrical disconnection. So no one will get their electricity disconnected. We're providing payment extensions. We're waiving certain late fees for customers who are having hardship. And we will continue to do that as long as we're under the state of emergency. So for customers who are having issues, please feel free to call us, go on our website, and we'll be able to help you. One of the, some of the other things that we're pushing out to our customers, we know that a lot of people are working from home right now and kids are at home. So we have a few energy saving tips. I'll just cover a couple of them, but feel free to go on our website. We have them there. For a lot of small businesses who are not operating right now, it's best to, you know, keep your air condition at 82 degrees in your offices or your businesses while you're not there. You know, unplug any computer or any type of equipment that can survive without electricity, unplug them. So you're saving, you know, those electricity. Close your blinds, you know, and this is also for those of you who are at home. I know we're at home and we like to have everything open up, but just keep in mind that for rooms that you're not in, if you just keep the shades closed, you know, turn the fans off, you know, those simple little things can save electricity. 78 degrees is what we recommend you set your thermostat at. I know for some people that's not doable, but you know, you'll see a huge difference by just having your thermostat set at 78 degrees. And if you're leaving your home, turn it to 82 degrees. When you come back home, you can readjust it. So those are just a couple of the things I wanted to touch on that we're doing. Feel free to go to our website for those who need help, fpl.com/health, or feel free to email me or, you know, text me, call me if you have any questions. So with that, I'll turn it back over to you, Troy.
Thank you, Sophia. We appreciate all that you're doing for this community. Those are great tips for us and any reduction in our utility bill is always a good thing. So we appreciate that. All right, now I'm going to turn it over to the Chair of the Government Affairs Council for Boynton Beach. He is in Mission Control, as you can see his backdrop, he's very busy today. And so Rob Jager, thanks for being here. Thanks for your leadership on this council. And I'll turn it over to you for a comment or two and then to introduce our guest speaker this morning, Rob.
All right, thank you. Well, I appreciate everybody being here. I see it's a little bigger crowd than we normally get in person, which is kind of nice. So I appreciate everybody being here. Let me read quickly through the bio so we can get an understanding of who we have with us today. So Mac Bernard was elected in November of 2016 for the Palm Beach County Commission in District 7. His historic election marked him as the first black male and Haitian-American Palm Beach County Commissioner. His goals for the county commission is to create good-paying jobs and job training opportunities, improve public safety and law enforcement relations, increase small business and women and minority participation in county contracts, keeping taxes low, and obviously advocating for more affordable and sustainable housing. Mac Bernard has an extensive resume of public service. He's been a Delray Beach City Commissioner and the Deputy Vice Mayor. Later, he was elected to the Florida House of Representatives, served on several committees that support women and children and public education. And currently, he's the Chairman for the Toussaint Louverture, I don't know how you say that exactly, but High School for Arts and Socialist Justice, and is a board member of the Color of Hope Foundation. Max lived in Palm Beach County for 30 years and graduated from honors from both Florida State University and the University of Florida's 11 College of Law. I don't know how that happens. And in his spare time, he created a real, he is a real estate and tax attorney. Mac and his wife Shawna are raising their three daughters here and are immensely proud to be a part of the Palm Beach County family. And so with that, I welcome Commissioner Mac Bernard.
Thank you very much. Can everybody hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, perfect. Good morning, everybody. My name is Mac Bernard and I'm just really happy and excited to join the Boca Chamber of Commerce and also the Government Affairs Committee for Boynton Beach. You know, I have three of my staff members who are part of the phone call, who are part of this meeting. We have Darren Romulus, who's also on the phone, who's also on the meeting, Will Niede, Will Niede Emanuel, and also Parnell August. So I have three of my staff members. So just want to thank, you know, Troy for, you know, as the President and CEO, for having me to be, to give an update on, you know, what's going on in the county. The full Board of Directors of the Chamber of Commerce, Rob Jager, thanks for the long bio. Jonathan, you know, thanks for, you know, working with our office to try to, you know, schedule this meeting. And then finally, you know, want to thank the sponsor for this meeting, want to thank FPNL, and want to thank Sophia Eccleston for the work that FPL is doing for Palm Beach County and throughout the state of Florida. You know, I think I was supposed to do this, I think this meeting was initially scheduled for February, and I was come in and speak about a housing bond that I was working on and the environmental bond that we were working on in the county. And that was going to be in February, and things changed completely in Palm Beach County. And so now we're dealing with this pandemic, this Corona, you know, coronavirus that we're dealing with, not only in Palm Beach County, but in the state of Florida and throughout the world. So this is something that we're dealing with. Let me give you a little bit of what's going on throughout the state of Florida. Right now, as of 5:00 PM yesterday, we have a total of 28,576 residents. That's both Florida residents and non-Florida residents that has tested positive for COVID-19. We take a look at the different types of testing that we do in the state of Florida. First, we, the ones that are confirmed by the CDC, that's about 3,000 of those individuals have tested. But by commercial and hospital labs and private labs, 24,000 residents have tested positive. And then if, when you go into non-Florida residents, a total of 785 residents. And when we take a look at the, you know, what are the risk factors for Florida residents to see, you know, is it a community spread or are people coming from different places? And the people who have tested positive, about 1,600 of those residents have traveled, come from somewhere else. About 8,500 of them have contact with confirmed cases and then also traveled and contacted with confirmed cases are 1,400. And then, but we have like 16,000 residents that we don't know exactly how they contacted with the virus. So that's the virus that we're dealing with, that we don't know exactly, you know, how they contacted the virus. And also, let's go into the characteristics of the residents who have tested for the coronavirus. I can tell you that the numbers are like in terms of, if you're 25 to 34-year-olds, 15%. 35 to 44-years-old are 15% of the population. 45 to 55-years-old are 18%. And over 55 and to 64 are 17%. And it goes up to 65 to 74-year-olds are 13%. Now however, the deaths have pretty much, in the state of Florida, 223 of the deaths in the state of Florida are individuals who are 65 years of age and older to 74. 30%, which is 279 residents, are over 75 to 84-years-old. And then if you're 85, then it's 261 deaths and that's 28%. So most of the deaths, which is a total of 927 deaths in the state of Florida, are, most of the deaths are people who are over 65 and above. And so because of the fact that we're looking at to see how is this impacting the different races in the state of Florida, in terms of white population in the state of Florida, 49% of the individuals that's tested positive are white, 16% are black, and then also other, which is Hispanic, is about 8%. And however, we've got a huge number of cases in the state of Florida that are called unknown cases, and that's about 26% of the positive cases. So what we're doing is working with the state of Florida to determine exactly, you know, how we can get better numbers. So in that way, we can know exactly, you know, who are in our communities are being impacted by the coronavirus. Now, you know, one thing that I'm always looking at is what's going on in our long-term care facilities that are, you know, what's going on? We have over 36 of our, you know, long-term care facilities that have people who've tested positive for the coronavirus. And looking in Palm Beach County, we've looked at the fatalities in those, in those, you know, in the long-term facilities, we have 171 residents, let me, hold on, 2,333 cases of positive are in the long-term care facilities. And in Palm Beach County, we have 171 of those cases and then also 28 deaths. So we're continuously monitoring the long-term care facilities to figure out exactly how we can try to mitigate some of the circumstances to reduce the virus in those facilities. Now in terms of, you know, how many tests have we done in Palm Beach County? And, you know, we've been, I've been, you know, the commission and everybody in county, we've been working on to try to increase the amount of testing in the county. Right now, we have a total of 19,875 tests that's been performed in the county, so, which is about 12%, you know, so which is better than where we started because we were one of the worst counties in the state in terms of based on population per capita that we were, we were getting tested. So now we've tested 19,875 individuals. And, you know, since, let's look at the cities that's also tested positive, you know, in Palm Beach County. We looked at the top 20 cities in the state of Florida that's tested positive and have five of our, of our cities are in the top 20 in the state of Florida that's tested positive, that are in the top 20s. Number nine is the city of West Palm Beach with over 454 individuals. And then let's look at the municipalities that are south, Boca Raton, 375 individuals, Boynton Beach, 315, Delray Beach, 298. And that's at 18, top 18. And then in 20th place is the city of Lake Worth with 251 individuals. So these are some of the statistics that are going on in the state of Florida on the coronavirus. Now, what we're doing is, we have three testing sites in the county that we've worked really, really hard and diligent to try to open up. Initially, what we did was, we tried to get a FEMA site in Palm Beach County, and Palm Beach County was denied a FEMA site. And we were very disappointed that, you know, when we asked the federal government to open up a FEMA site in Palm Beach County and we were denied. So what we did was, the next option was, we needed to work with the state of Florida. And so the first site that we opened up was, was the 15 Ballpark of the Palm Beaches. I'll give you a little bit of information about that. The Healthcare District of Palm Beach County, they are our partner with the 15 Ballpark of the Palm Beaches. And yesterday, they tested 566 patients at the ballpark. But however, there, we had over 127 patients who didn't show up for their scheduled appointments. And the average age of the patients were 51. And we had actually a total of 27 children that were tested. And the youngest patient that was tested was one year, was one year old. And so we're trying to test as many people and people are being notified of their results. And we had over a total of 9,479 tests have been administered at this site since we opened on March 31st. And so what we've done is, you know, the phone number, if you have, if you know someone that needs to be tested, it's 561-642-1000. That's 561-642-1000. So if you know an individual that needs to get tested, that's the site that's got the most, the easiest to get tested, which is at the 15 Ballpark. The South County Civic Center, because of the fact that we know we have a population in South County that needs to be tested because we have such an older population in South County, we also set to open that second site. So a week later, we opened the South County Civic Center site and that, we partnered with that site with the Cleveland Clinic. And I can tell you that as of yesterday, we tested 153 patients there and we have the capability of testing over 250 patients per day. And for today, we only had a total of 88 appointments so far. And so we can, at those two sites, we can actually schedule more appointments, but folks are canceling some of the appointments. And the phone number to schedule that appointment is 561-804-050. And so what we did was, at the Cleveland Clinic to get more people tested, we've expanded the criteria for the individuals. So that's anyone over the age of 16 who has a fever or non-febrile respiratory illness such as cough, shortness of breath, runny nose, or fever should be able to get tested there and will, and will be testing there as long as people need to be tested. So what we're trying to do is make sure that we've opened those two sites. And then yesterday, we opened one site in Belgrade. And so because we want to make sure that we're addressing the residents that are in Belgrade, and I believe yesterday, there were 11 patients that didn't show up. 64 patients got tested. And so I believe that at that site, three children were tested and the youngest patient was five-years-old. So what we're trying to do is trying to get as many people tested as possible. And the next phase of testing, because I've been working on the testing piece so much, what we're going to try to do is, in some of the underserved areas, what can we do to test, create pop-up sites? So in that way, we can, what we're trying to do is figure out how we can, people who are homebound, how we can get them tested, working with the Palm Beach Fire Department, how we can go to those sites and then to get people tested. And what we're also trying to do is see if we can do five different pop-up sites in the county. So in that way, you know, we can reach some of the underserved areas of the residents. And so, so that's really the testing piece that we're trying to work on, which is, what we want to do is continue to test as many individuals as possible until the private market is able to test them. So in that way, you know, because right now, we, you know, we're using the resources to get those tested. But what we, what we're hoping is that the private market will eventually take it over. So in that way, we won't have to continue to provide those testings. But so when you're dealing with testing, then, you know, once you test individuals, then, you know, we're looking at, okay, what are the medical care that, to provide for those individuals? And so what we're looking also at the county, we're monitoring the hospital beds in the county, the ICUs and the ventilators, just to make sure that we have, you know, the hospital beds available. So in total in the county, we have over 4,332 available hospital beds with all the hospitals. ICU is 410. And the ventilators, we have over 418 capacity for ventilators in the county. And what we've done is, we're monitoring on a daily basis to see, you know, what's the percentage of the hospital beds that we're using? And right now, the hospital beds are a little bit under 50% utilization. ICU bed is a little bit over, it's around 55%. And then also the ventilators are around 40%. So in terms of, you know, if folks contacted the virus, you know, will we have the hospital beds to treat our residents in the county? We do have that. And then the next piece is, all right, you know, we want to see exactly, you know, how prevalent is this virus in Palm Beach County? So right now, we're working with the state of Florida to figure out exactly, you know, how we can get the antibody testing in Palm Beach County. The governor of the state of Florida, he purchased over 100,000 antibody testing that were FDA-approved. And so they were supposed to come to the state of Florida at the end of this week or early next week. So what we're going to try to do is work with the governor's office to see, you know, so we can get as our fair share of the antibody testing in Palm Beach County. So that's more from the testing perspective, what we're doing. And also, you know, what we have to also shift to is, if you, if you look at my emails on a regular basis, you will see that I get emails every day on pretty much open up the golf courses, open up the beaches and boatyards, marinas, parks and natural areas. So these are some, these are the decisions that we have to make. But also, you know, what are we doing in terms of making sure that, you know, our residents are practicing the social distance that are necessary? What we've done in the county, we've created four work groups to take a look at, all right, how can we open our beaches and pools in the county? And, because, you know, we've got our public pools and then we've got the condo pools, how do we open them up? Next is the golf courses, which, you know, we need to do that, but we have to make sure that we do it in a safe manner. And then boatyards and marinas and park and natural areas. So those four work groups are working together right now. And what we're hoping is that by, hopefully by Friday, we get the recommendations that are from them and then for us to eventually come into an agreement with the different groups and entities who would be able to help us, you know, the groups and entities to get these things open. So I believe that by early next week or by, by the end of next week, we will have, you know, a conclusion in terms of our beaches and pools, golf courses and boatyards and marinas, and also the park to natural areas open up in the county. But what we're, what we want to do is make sure that we're practicing, you know, the safety, because we've got to make sure that we're protecting the health and the safety of our residents. And so we're, we're being really, really careful in terms of making these decisions to make sure that we are prepared. Now in terms of opening, you know, this is, you know, we're talking to the Chamber of Commerce, small businesses, we've got to really open up Palm Beach County, open up the state of Florida. And, you know, right now, we're really monitoring the governor's reopening task force. They're, they started having meetings this Monday, this past Monday, and they're meeting, you know, daily to, to address the issues in terms of, you know, what businesses to open up and everything. We have two Palm Beach County residents who are on the task force. We have Mayor David Kerner, who's on the task force, and also we have, you know, Mr. Eric Salaji from FPNL, who's also on the task force. And so they're going through the process in terms of, you know, making those decisions as a state. And what we want to do is make sure that we're following the decisions that they're going to recommend to the governor, which I believe that they're going to make those recommendations to the governor on Friday. And then so, and then eventually, the governor will spell out exactly, you know, what businesses are going to open up and everything. And then what we will do as a county, you know, you may have a decision that's made from, from Tallahassee, but it may not be specific for Palm Beach County. But what we're going to do is take those decisions and then also work with the governor's office. And then for us to create our task force working with, with the governor's office. And the task force, what we're going to try to do is, you know, make sure that we're including the business leaders and of course, you know, the Boca Chamber of Commerce, the Economic Council, the BDB, some of our business leaders, you know, folks who are on this board, on the Board of Directors, we're going to look at, you know, look at bringing everyone together. So in that way, we can open up, you know, the businesses that are, you know, how do we open them up to make sure that we're protecting our residents? And also for us to, you know, get back, because this has been an economic hit for Palm Beach County. And so I, the next piece is, of course, you know, I'm hoping that, you know, between today and tomorrow, the House will vote on the second round of the Paycheck Protection, which over $310 billion will go into the Paycheck Protection Program. I do have, I'm not sure, someone from the SBA who's also on the call, Victoria Guerrero. Victoria, are you on?
I am. Good morning, everyone.
All right. So Victoria Guerrero, who's the District Director for the Small Business Assistant for SBA South Florida, she's on the phone call. And I'm gonna, you know, Victoria, if you can, you know, give an update from the SBA's perspective, this is the Boca Chamber of Commerce, and really would appreciate if you can give, you know, from your perspective, from the SBA's perspective on, you know, what's going on for South Florida and Palm Beach County.
Yes, good morning, everyone, and thank you so much for having me here today. As we all know, we're all eagerly waiting, we're all eagerly waiting for the second round of appropriations, so to continue assisting all of our small businesses here in South Florida. What I do want to share with, with the group is a few things. One, the process will remain the same in case you have small business owners asking you, you know, if the process is changing. So remember, we have, our main programs is the Economic Injury Disaster Loan, which is a long-term loan. It's, owners can get up to, if they are approved, up to $2 million. It's at 3.75% for small businesses, 2.75% for nonprofits. And this is the one that has the loan advance up to $10,000, which just does not need to be paid back. And, and the way that's calculated is, the SBA looks at the number of W2 employees a company has and it's $1,000 per employee up to $10,000. So that is the, a quick overview of the Economic Injury Disaster Loan, and of course, I can go into it deeper if anybody has questions. Our other very popular loan is the Paycheck Protection Program, which is known as the PPP. With that one, as was mentioned, you know, Congress is going to appropriate $310 billion specifically for that program. And if I remember correctly, I'm going on memory now, I think there's, of that 60 billion is going to the smaller community banks, so they can also focus on the smaller mom-and-pop organizations and make sure they get the funding as well. Now for that particular loan, the PPP, folks need to go to their SBA-approved bank. The banks are the ones that are managing that. I've been told that some, you know, banks, SBA gives the bank the overall criteria and then the bank decides how they want to manage it. So we can certainly ask, answer questions, but so proprietors can, can, can apply, 1099s can apply, self-employed can apply, small businesses can apply, nonprofits get applied, religious organizations can apply. So they've really relaxed a lot of their previous criteria to make sure to assist as many organizations as possible. What I wanted to share a few- What I wanted to share a few statistics here because I know a lot of times in the media, we hear that the money isn't, isn't, isn't getting to our small businesses. As of April sixteenth, which was the last Thursday, on the PPP program alone, the state of Florida approved eighty-nine thousand applications. And that constitute to roughly eighteen billion dollars of funding that came to the state of Florida. Now, in that snapshot of time, we are, we were third in the nation. Florida typically ranks in number three or number four, and the folks ahead of us is usually California and Texas. And if you look at the at the size of these states compared to Florida, kind of gives an indication of how aggressive our small business owners in Florida have been in applying for these loans and how well our banks have been in in dispersing these funds. So as of last Thursday, eighty-nine thousand applications approved, eighteen billion to the state of Florida, we were third in the nation. I'm hoping to get new statistics either today or later, early earlier next week. In reference to the idle loan, let me bring these statistics up because we just received these yesterday, and I don't, I don't have them and by memory. The advanced portion of it alone, this is the one that does not need to be paid back. In the state of Florida, we processed sixty-eight thousand one hundred and thirty applications, which constitutes to two hundred seventy-two thousand six hundred, I mean, million, two hundred seventy-two million, six hundred and fifty thousand dollars that were dispersed in the state of Florida. Again, at this time of this snapshot, Florida was third in the nation to receive these particular funding. And that's just on on the advanced portion. Now, if we go back to the traditional loan, the traditional loan, Florida has processed and approved two thousand ninety-eight application that constitute to roughly three hundred and eighty-four million dollars. And again, we were third in the nation with that as well. So I I say all of this just to, you know, give you a snapshot and and let you know where Florida is standing against, you know, all the other states in the country. Let you know that we are receiving billions of dollars for our small businesses and and the the funds are coming, getting out there. And I myself am going to start interviewing those businesses that have received funds and putting it on our SBA YouTube channel because I want folks to really see our our success stories. And let them know that, you know, applications are coming through, folks are getting approved. It is taking a long time. I I I won't, you know, kid you there. But it's little by little, it's it's coming for them. So I I did want to share that. I don't know if anyone has any questions at this time. I do also want to mention that my South Florida District Office, ever since this disaster hit, you know, SBA is here for small businesses throughout the year, not just during times of disaster. We provide various services at free, you know, at no cost to help small businesses get started and grow within the community. But right now during this disaster continuous webinars, two hour webinars, you know, starting as early as eight in the morning and finishing around five or six. And I also have virtual office hours. And the reason I did this is because I want to make sure that our small businesses know they can connect with someone here locally. A lot of times, if they call an eight hundred number, you know, they get a recording, so on and so forth, and folks get frustrated, you know, I would too. But I want folks to know we're here for them. And what I tell everyone, and if you can help me get the word out, all they need to do is go to sba.gov forward slash South Florida. There's a calendar of events there, and we always are posting our our webinars on that calendar every week. Over the weekend, we posted for the following week. And we're ramping up, we're going to double our webinars and our virtual office hours. This week was a little bit slower for us. But next week, I know we're going to start getting a lot more calls. And we we do have these webinars in English and Spanish. And with the help of Ms. Villanita in in the Commissioner's office, we're going to be also working on creating it in Creole because I do want to reach out to all of the main populations in our community. So our Creole webinar will be coming up tomorrow, actually. So so with that being said, again, sba.gov forward slash South Florida. The calendar is there. Folks can even apply to be part of our email subscription list. As soon as we get information and any new news on new programs, we send everybody an email with this information. And also any webinars and presentations we have, we communicate to everybody through our email delivery system. So that's another way of staying connected. But that's that's, you know, right now for me, I don't know if anybody has any questions, if I if if you want me to speak a little bit more in depth in any of the programs, I'm happy to do so.
Victoria, if you can speak a little bit about, you know, the the new programs, so in that way, and what the businesses who are here, what they can do, you know, to to prepare for, you know, what's going to, you know, the three hundred and ten billion dollars?
Yes, of course. So right now, our our current programs that we have is the Economic Injury Disaster Loan. To apply for that, businesses would have to go to sba.gov forward slash disaster. And there's a portal there where you can apply. It's a real simple forum. It's three pages long. And and some of my webinars, I walk people through this. Right now, the portal is not open. We're still waiting for those appropriations to to be released. But as soon as it does, I suspect it'll be early next week, the portal will open and we continue to accept applications. For those that have applied and you're wondering, you know, what is the status? Nobody's called me back. I want to let you know a few things. If your application starts with a number three, that means that your application is in the pipeline and it is being reviewed. In my opinion, from what I, my conversations with small business owners, it's taking about four to five weeks to to have applications reviewed and approved and funding to be dispersed. So that kind of gives you an idea of how much longer to wait. If you do wish to contact someone in reference to your loan, we do have a disaster relief customer service center who manage the idle calls. That's all they do is the idle calls and the idle loans. So you can call them at one eight hundred six five nine two nine five five, one eight hundred six five nine two nine five five. You can also email them at disaster customer service at sba.gov, disaster customer service at sba.gov. The call center is open from eight AM to eight PM, and that's every day of the week. So you do have that option. For those in that have information in reference to the PPP program, as mentioned, these are programs that the loan is actually a hundred percent forgiven if you use it in the proper categories. So once you receive the funds, you need to use seventy-five percent of those funds for eight weeks of payroll from the time you receive the funds. And twenty-five percent can be used to pay for your utilities, your rent, or any mortgage interest that you may have. Once you have done that, then if you follow those rules, the loan will be a hundred percent forgiven. What I've been telling small business owners who have applied for both and received funding for both, if you can, open up two separate accounts, only because you you don't want to mix that. There's going to be a time that the bank is going to say, let me see your 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 tracking mechanism or your reports that shows me how these funds were utilized. And it's good if you keep them separate. It just makes things a lot easier, you know, at the end, when you're requesting for that loan forgiveness. Now, for the PPP, let's say you need to use the funding for something else that it's not in those categories, you absolutely can do that as long as it's business related. Now, that percentage of funds that you use, let's say, to purchase inventory, that that percentage there, you're going to have to pay that back within two years at a one percent interest rate. So you want to be mindful that when you are utilizing the funds for the PPP, take really good notes, keep really good records because that's what's going to help you get that loan a hundred percent a hundred percent forgiven. So that's basically, you know, a a quick snapshot. I also want to say for those small business owners that currently have loans with the SBA, this is a smaller program that's not very well known, but I I always mention it in my calls. We have what's called an SBA Debt Relief Program. So the way that program is, is if you are a small business owner who has a current seven A five oh four or micro loan with the SBA, the SBA will pay the next six months of capital of principal, I'm sorry, we will pay the next six months of principal, taxes and fees on that particular loan. So again, it's not a deferment. We will actually pay for it. So that's a little bit of a help. If you are interested in that, you need to contact the the bank that had that loan for you. Speak with an SBA trained representative. Sometimes these folks speak to the front teller and they have no idea what we're talking about. You to, every bank has an SBA team or at least an SBA trained person who knows our programs. I also want to say on that note, if you do not have these these programs and you're looking to apply for any of these seven A five oh four micro loan, as long as you do it before September twenty-seventh of this year, the SBA will still be able to help you make, you know, will all, will still be able to make payments on behalf of you for those months that that we mentioned. So that's another program we have. And a fourth program, which is even a lesser known program, it's really for small businesses who already have an existing relationship with what we call an express SBA lenders. Our lenders are in different tiers. An express SBA lender will be able to provide small businesses with up to twenty-five thousand dollars with very little paperwork. And they should be able to receive that funding right away. When the small business, if they apply for the idle loan, which is that longer thirty year loan at three point seven five, that loan will pay off the express loan. So it it kind of, you know, helps with removing one loan from from your name. So that's another program that we have. For information on any of these programs, you can go to sba.gov forward slash disaster. There's a tab on top that says funding programs. And then you'll see where it says coronavirus relief, you can click on there. And if you scroll down, you'll see each of our programs that that we just mentioned.
Perfect. Commissioner, if I may, Victoria, thank you for all that information. I know that you guys are putting on your webinars constantly, and and I encourage anyone on this call to participate in those if you if you haven't already. But thank you for all that that great information. Commissioner, I want to make sure we get, we get to some of the questions that that we have. There's a few out there. Before we we do that, first of all, I just wanted to thank you for your overall leadership during this crisis. You've been front and center, particularly when it comes to the testing sites. So we know all the work that you've done for that. So we want to thank you for that. I I think I also saw Commissioner Amulus on the call earlier and and newly elected, but back to the Boynton Commission, Woodrow Hayes on the call, it's who I think. So welcome to those folks. I wanted to to kick off the first question as it relates to testing, as you were talking about earlier, Commissioner. It sounds like when when those two two big sites, the ballpark and and South County Civic Center, when they came online, you know, the phone line was kind of overwhelmed with folks to go to the pre-screening. If I heard you right, that seems to have leveled out and there's there's actually capacity now and and a a good flow of those who are trying to get tested and getting through those sites. Is that correct? Or can you speak to that?
Yeah, that is correct. So what we're trying to do now is there, we know that there are more people that needs to be tested. But some of the areas, they haven't made the phone calls. So we've actually looked at even reverse nine one one calling certain areas. So in that way, we can get them to get tested. And so we're work, we're trying to make sure that we get as many people tested as possible. And and so really, what we're trying to do is we want people to call. And and so in that way, we can get them tested because we don't want this virus to linger, to not know who's been who's who are positive and who are spreading it. And you remember, what we've, what we're also waiting for is the CDC to change the guideline guidelines to allow, you know, people who are asymptomatic to also be tested because, you know, we have people who are in the county who are spreading this virus and who has never been tested. And also, and that's why with the antibody testing, we'll be able to also know, you know, what's the percentage of the of our overall population that's been, that's positive for the virus that we don't even know.
And then just a follow up to that, Commissioner. So right now, under the current CDC guidelines, do we have enough tests in Palm Beach County now?
Well, that's always that I can tell you what we're, what we've worked on is we we'd never have enough tests. And so we're always working with the state to to send the tests down to Palm Beach County. And so like, we just received, I believe, two thousand test kits for the 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 ball, the Fit Team Ballpark of the Palm Beaches. We have enough testing for the Civic Center site and also in Doug Lake. So we, when we need it, we will, we will also get it from the state. So but we're, we, but sometimes, you know, it may, there may be a delay, but we're always trying to get the tests.
Got it. Thank you. Jonathan, I'll I'll turn it over to you now and and ask some questions from some of the folks on the call.
Thank you. And I apologize, my my monitor froze, but you can still hear me, I hope. We have a question here regarding the antibody tests. And I know that Michelle McGovern from Baptist was kind enough to put a link in there, but I don't know if you want to answer that. Her husband and her recovered from the COVID nineteen. And their question is, how do they get an antibody test in order to donate?
Well, what we're, I believe that by by early next week, we will have the antibody testing in in Palm Beach County. And so that's working with the governor's office and with Jared Moskowitz from the Division of Emergency Management. So so by early next week, we'll have the antibody antibody testing. And I also believe that there's also a company, I believe, out of Jupiter, that's also that we're talking to to also see how we can, they've developed an antibody testing that we're working to see if we can also get them on board. So so by next week, what we are hoping is that we're able to get that and we are able to randomly test some of the residents in the county.
Great. Thank you. The next question is, is I've heard that in the Palm Beach County zip code three, three, four, three, five, which is in Boynton Beach, is a hotspot. Can you share your knowledge about why this is? Is there something unique about this zip code? They happen to reside in that zip code.
Well, that's, to to be honest with you, that's the zip code that I reside in. So so I, yesterday, I did take a look at the the zip code, and some of the areas in the three, three, four, three, five are east of Federal Highway where we have some of the condos that are east of, that we have residents who are older older than sixty-five in those areas. But the the areas that are west of Federal are, it's not as much west federal, but it's east federal on that three, three, four, three, five. But I did take, I did look at it yesterday, and we're going to try to see. One of the things that I tried to talk to staff yesterday is to see how we can do a pop-up testing site in that three, three, four, three, five. And also to look at a little bit north, which is in the Stan Castle, which is north of Boynton Beach, to see how we can get those people tested. And in in, on Wednesday, we had a I believe, no, I think it was Tuesday, we had a pop-up testing site in Delray Beach. That was a work with Quantum Foundation and also with Found Care. So we're trying to get these pop-up sites so in that way, we can address some of these hard to reach areas. And one thing I I neglected to say, you know, you know, Michelle McGovern, you know, with, you know, Baptist Health, thank you very much for all the work that you're doing for the residents of Palm Beach County and throughout the state of Florida. You know, we couldn't do what we're doing in this county without the help of Baptist. And thank you, Michelle, for the work.
Thank you. I know our chairman has a question. Rob?
Yep. My question, there's a couple, couple things that kind of come up. One of them, there's a lot of talk about coronavirus coming back again in the winter. And is, are there things that the county is doing right now to figure out, okay, what do we do to prevent having to do a lockdown again, if you will, or stay at home kind of situation as much as we have been? Is there anything we're doing now or?
Well, that's, that's when we're making the decisions on the beaches, pools, golf courses, boatyards, marinas, the parks and natural areas, when we're making these decisions, we're making these decision you know, spread, you know, in the fall, you know, and also, you know, when flu season come back. So that's the reason. Some people just say, hey, open up the golf courses, but we're trying to make sure that, hey, we're going to adhere to the social distancing. You know, make sure you do that. And also, I I believe that we're going to come up with the ten commitments for golf courses, you know, it's not like the ten commitments, but we're going to come up courses, you know, it's not like the 10 commitments, but we're going to come up. We're trying to make sure the spread in the future and also with the businesses. That's why we're not going to make decisions without working with the state because they, like the Florida Chamber of Commerce, you know, they have, you know, the economists, they know exactly how do we open properly and we're going to try to make these correct decisions. And the last thing that we don't want is, you know, if you open up too quickly and then there's a spread and then there's potential liability for some of our small businesses. And the last thing that we want is, you know, for it to be a spread and then there's to be liabilities and lawsuits. And so that's the reasons why we're really careful and making these tough decisions to make sure that we protect our residents in the future.
All right. And then I had one other question too, and it might be just an easy, quick one, but how has going through this affected Palm Beach, Palm Beach County's budget and, and are we looking at, you know, where we are with that and is this causing bigger problems? I mean, I think of some businesses, there's less expenses going on because they're staying at home, there's less going on. So some of them are still saving some money, but is there any of that kind of thing happening with the county?
Well, you know, a couple of the things that, you know, we've had to go through, just think about it, we had two bonds that we were working on because, you know, housing is so important to the county and we've basically put it on the shelf. The environmental water bond, we've also put that on the shelf. And, you know, we were supposed to do a renovation of the Roger Dean Stadium and most likely in the next meeting in May, we're going to also put that on the shelf. And also, you know, even the, the payments to the 15 ballpark of the Palm Beaches, you know, because we don't, we're not getting the bed tax dollars that we were getting, you know, we're trying to address these issues and, you know, we haven't gone through the budget yet and, but what we're going to try to do is make the best decisions to make sure that we, because, you know, your basic things that we need is, you know, you know, public safety, our sheriff, you know, Rick Bradshaw, make sure that we were safe in the county and to make sure that we protect the health, safety, and the welfare of our residents, you know. Some of the things that we don't need, we'll have to, you know, cut. But, you know, as a former state representative, when I was in Tallahassee, I was a state rep during the recession and so we had to make these budget cuts. And we will do everything that we can to tighten our belt to make sure that, you know, we don't end up overtaxing our residents and to make sure that, you know, our residents can, you know, afford to stay in Palm Beach County.
Commissioner, this is Troy again. I've got another question. In, in talking to, to our members and, and the businesses out there, there are some businesses that are, that have been deemed essential under the appropriate executive orders, but I think, you know, most, and they can continue to work. Most have, you know, taken the position of, of remote working for as many of their employees as they can, whether they're a 10-person company or a 200-person company. There's just some questions now from their point of view as the talk of reopen Florida with the governor's task force moves forward. As you know, we reached out to you and your colleagues, the Boca Chamber has launched an initiative called Moving Business Forward, all about the, the concept of restarting and reopening. They are essential, they've been deemed essential and they, they can have their employees work at the office. And so I think now, and of course, this is the, the million dollar question, they're just not sure, even though they're essential, and they, they have maybe just a few people working in the office that need to be, about when they can start bringing their other employees into the office, all while conforming to physical distancing, et cetera. Should we tell them, you know, to, to continue to be patient and hold off, that there will be more specific guidelines coming down from the governor's task force, you know, to, to you all? Or, or can they start to, you know, bring back some, or would you recommend that they start bringing back some folks complying with physical distance?
You know, Troy, it's a great question, you know. What I would recommend is, you know, the, the task force will make a recommendation to the governor by tomorrow. And so what I would say is just to hold off until we get the recommendation from the task force, you know, tomorrow. So in that way, you know, we'll know the direction of the state of Florida. Because what we don't want is, you know, you bring the residents back and we don't have enough testing and then also there's a spread and also there's the liability part of it. So if, I would say if, if we can hold off till, you know, the governor's task force makes their recommendation tomorrow, and then that will allow us to be able to, you know, as a community, to be able to make the best decision for our residents. And the question about, you know, essential businesses versus non-essential, from my perspective, you know, all I know is that if you're trying to pay your bills, every, every job is essential. So what we're going to try to do is, I think that I'm, you know, I'm more like, let's figure out the risk factor, whether it's a high-risk business versus a low-risk business. So in that way, you know, we can, the low-risk businesses and what we can do to do the social distancing. And then for the higher risk, like for instance, you know, like going to a ballgame, you know, like those things are, you know, where we're going to have to adjust and those may be in a different phase, but, you know, hopefully we're able to take care of the low risk. And so hopefully that would be some of those essential businesses that will eventually bring their workers, you know, back to their offices.
Perfect, thank you, Commissioner. And just maybe a quick follow-up to that, in, just in terms of the PPE, how's the inventory for, certainly for Palm Beach County when it comes to all of our healthcare professionals? But beyond that, are we, how comfortable are we with, with that inventory right now? I know there's a lot of great, you know, partnerships, whether it's with FAU and others that are helping to provide that, but how's our, how's our status in Palm Beach County with PPE?
Well, you know, FAU's in Boca Raton, just want to thank FAU for, you know, stepping up. And what we're, what we're doing is, the hospitals, we're monitoring the PPEs at the hospitals and we feel better about the PPEs at the hospitals. But we're, what we're also trying to do, since we do have over 36 of the long-term care facilities that have, that have, that we have folks that tested positive for the COVID-19, what we're trying to do is try to infuse more PPEs in the long-term care facilities. So that's more, that's the part that we're working on right now. The hospitals are, you know, stocking up and they're getting better, but it's the long-term care facilities that we're really trying to stock up and beef up with the PPEs.
Great, thank you. It, it's 9:30 right now. I, I told you that this, this hour would fly by very quickly. Before I turn, turn it over to Chairman Jaeger to, to wrap up, again, Commissioner Bernard, thank you so much for your leadership. We know you're working around the clock and tirelessly through this crisis for everybody in, in Palm Beach County. We can't thank you enough for, for what you're doing. Sophia Eccleston, thank you for your support, all that FPL's doing. We're, we're happy that Mr. Salagi is serving on the governor's task force as well and do look forward to some of those recommendations that'll come down very soon. Victoria, thank you for hopping on the call as well and providing some updated information on SBA. I do want to thank everyone for coming on the call. And so Chairman Jaeger, I will turn it over to you for some final comments and we can adjourn this meeting.
All right, thank you, Troy. I really appreciate, Commissioner, you being here and some of the information you gave us is really insightful and I do appreciate it and being able to answer the questions that we were able to throw at you. I know that's always fun when it's, you're not sure what question's going to come at you, so I do appreciate that. And for everybody that's, for everybody that's here, our next meeting is scheduled for May 28th, same time. I don't know if we're going to do it this way or another way, but let's, whatever way we're going to do it, we'll be meeting. In the meantime, I just wish everybody to stay safe and stay healthy and thank you all for your time. Have a great month. Until we see you next time.
Thank you.
Thank you.